Okay.
My line.
Hey. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 9th Montgomery County Commission Meeting. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television DATV and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House 404. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman.
Here.
Commissioner Dodge.
Here. First up, we have an update on the COVID vaccine by our wonderful friend Jeff Cooper from Dayton and Montgomery County Public Health, the commission.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dodge. I will quickly share my screen. And then we'll run through a few slides providing an update. All right. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Sounds good. I'll be very brief. I realize you have a lot on the agenda. First five slides really cover the data. So as a state, everyone has access to the Ohio Department of Health COVID dashboard. We are about 922,000 total cases in Ohio, but we are now beginning to trend in the desired direction in terms of fewer cases being reported each day. Also at Public Health Dayton Montgomery County, our website, we update the data, our data dashboard every day as well. You can see the total cases to date in Montgomery County within our West Central Ohio Planning Region, as well as the state number. And then that middle graph kind of shows you our trend line over time, dating back to the beginning of this pandemic in January of 2020. Clearly, we are also trending in the desired direction. And so that's very good news for our community. However, we still are at risk level three red in the Ohio Public Health Advisory System, along with 83 other counties in the state, only four counties, rural counties are at risk level two orange. And you can kind of get an idea of how we compare in terms of cases per 100,000 population over the last two weeks. So we are 55 out of 88 counties in terms of our rate, which is 379 cases per 100,000 population over the past two weeks. That's good news, though, because in December, we were over 900 cases per 100,000 population. So clearly, we are trending in the desired direction. And then obviously, if you want to take a look at all of the indicators that go into our rating as a county, we make those available on our website as well. So before we talk about the vaccination program, I think it's really important that we all revisit this whole concept of the the Swiss cheese concept of pandemic defense. And this is really important because just because we have vaccines does not mean that we can relax these other measures. So no single public health intervention is 100% effective. So just because we have vaccines doesn't mean we can stop with quarantine and isolation. We have to continue to address ventilation in buildings, need to continue with testing. We need to continue with avoiding crowds, avoiding travel, don't touch our face. Make sure we have good hand and cough etiquette, wear our masks and socially distance. And that also for the business community and others means remote work, virtual work to the extent possible. So regarding Ohio's vaccination program, we are currently in phase one and the supply of the vaccine remains limited, although there are indicators that it will be increasing. We will have increasing supply coming in the next several weeks to months. Two vaccines are currently approved for use in the United States Pfizer and Moderna. Both are very effective, up to 95% effective at preventing disease. However, both still require two doses Pfizer dose 21 days apart, Moderna doses 28 days apart. So for the various phases in Ohio right now, for phase one A, you can see the groups there who are eligible to receive the vaccine. So it's essentially those individuals most at risk occupationally of contracting the disease, as well as some of our most vulnerable residents in nursing homes, assisted living facilities, psychiatric hospitals, et cetera, as well as EMS responders. So these individuals are currently being vaccinated first and second dose within the state of Ohio and within Montgomery County. However, we are also implementing phase one B across the state. And so those population groups are individuals 65 years of age and older, individuals with a severe developmental or congenital medical disorder, and then employees in K to 12 schools. So regarding severe medical disorders, it's important to remember that currently individuals must have a developmental or intellectual disability and one of those severe medical disorders you see listed. And so our health department is working with Dayton Children's Hospital, as well as Montgomery County Developmental Disability Services to identify and vaccinate these individuals. I won't cover that. I'll go on to the next slide. So as a summary for phase one B, the week of January 19th began 80 years of age and older, the next week 75 and older, and we began to to roll in severe medical disorders with a disability. Then February 1st, 70 and older, as well as K to 12 schools. This week, Ohioans ages 65 years of age and older. And then beginning next week, it's individuals with one of those severe medical disorders, and they do not have to have a developmental or intellectual disability. We are awaiting guidance from the Ohio Department of Health in terms of how we validate and/or document severe medical disorder, because we do not have a population estimate for that group right now. That's going to be very difficult to determine how we how we make sure someone is eligible based on documentation. So just real quickly statewide, a little over 1 million vaccines have been administered first dose in the state of Ohio to date. But what becomes readily apparent on this chart, when you search by key metric, when you looked at race, it's very clear that there is a racial disparity in terms of who is receiving the vaccine. Of those 1 million individuals, 737,000 of those individuals are white. And you can see how the other races and ethnicities fare. As far as second doses in the state of Ohio, that number, I don't have it displayed here, but about 300,000 individuals have completed their second dose statewide. Then for Montgomery County, as of yesterday, a little over 47,000 individuals have received their first dose for phase one A and one B. And similar to the state data, there is a racial disparity in terms of who is being vaccinated. 31,000, almost 500 individuals are white out of that 47,000. And you can see how the other races and ethnicities fare. As far as second doses within Montgomery County, that number is about 13,000 to date. So we still have a long way to go, but we're optimistic with more and more vaccine becoming available for both Pfizer and Moderna, as well as over time, emergency use authorization for newer vaccines as well, such as Johnson and Johnson and Novavax and others, that hopefully we reach a point in the near future where we can make the vaccine available to all Ohioans and all Montgomery County residents who are interested in being vaccinated. So here's just then to finish up a few slides regarding our vaccination clinic at the Dayton Convention Center. We greet individuals. If they haven't registered or pre-registered, we register them on site. And then you can kind of get a sense inside the lines, as well as individuals move from these waiting lines into a screening line. We have medical screeners reviewing their medical history and determining any contraindications, including whether or not they've received any other vaccine within the past 14 days, which then they would not be eligible to be vaccinated. And then from the screening lines, they go into the vaccine waiting lines. And we have these cubicles set up for vaccinating. And then on the other side, there is a recovery area. And we observe every individual who's vaccinated for 15 minutes. And then if they have a medical issue that indicates severe allergy or anaphylaxis, then we observe them for 30 minutes before they leave the site. For individuals ages 65 and older, though, we recognize that many of those individuals are not able to stand for any length of extended time. And so we simply operate the recovery area as our clinic. All individuals ages 65 and older who are eligible and come to the clinic are seated. And then we have our team where we've combined all the stations. We have a person to register. If they're not pre-registered, we have a medical screener and a vaccinator with a cart, and they simply roll down each individual lane and do the vaccination while individuals are seated. And I think perhaps something that's really important that we should all keep in mind is that as as we work as a community to promote health equity, Public Health Dayton in Montgomery County is reserving 20% of the doses that we receive each week, and those are going directly to our minority populations. And so we are working with local clergy to identify to date a few churches where we're offering the vaccine in minority communities. But we recognize that as more vaccine becomes available, as more population groups are added, the churches are not going to be large enough to operate as a as a large vaccination clinic. So we are working with Montgomery County. Thank you, Michael, for your your staff's assistance in identifying additional locations within Montgomery County where we can operate as a fixed facility. So that's a quick update from Public Health in terms of the data around COVID-19, as well as the vaccination work that's being done by many community partners in Montgomery County. And with that, I'll stop sharing my screen. Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Just a quick question. I think it's great what we're doing, sending out to the minority communities, especially through the churches. How? So when somebody makes an appointment for that, Commissioner, how do they? Do they say I need one of the minority? I mean, what what's the process for people connecting through that system?
So we have two separate registration processes for for how we schedule for vaccine. And right now, we're only doing registrations or pre-appointments for phase one B 65 and older. So we have a process through our call center or our website where any individual can go to register to show up at our clinic, which is scheduled every Wednesday for ages 65 and older. But then we are doing a separate registration process through them for the minority community. We're working directly with the churches, specifically today, St. Margaret's has been a site, as well as St. Luke's coming up this Friday. And the church members or the church leadership is identifying individuals who are interested within their congregations in terms of receiving the vaccine. And so they're helping us identify those individuals. I think one of the things we have concerns about regarding the state of Ohio is going to be rolling out a statewide centralized scheduling system for all Ohioans to receive the vaccine. So any individual can do a search based on where they live, identify vaccine providers close to them, and then work to schedule an appointment. That's going to be a challenge for us in terms of an equity standpoint. So we'll have to have also a separate process where we continue to allocate and reserve doses for our minority community.
Okay. I have a quick question, and that is what about this other strain that they keep talking about of the virus that is it hit?
So there so there, yes, Commissioner Dodge, there are several what we call variants of the SARS-CoV-2 virus. There's a South Africa variant. There's a UK variant. There very likely will be other variants. At this point, ongoing research is continuing, but there's no reason to suspect that the current vaccines that are approved for use would also not be effective against those variants. So until we know differently and the medical and scientific community indicate otherwise, and we receive guidance from CDC, we move forward with the belief that the current vaccines will be effective.
Okay, good. Good.
I just wanted to comment and Commissioner, we've talked about this before in other meetings, but you know, a concern of mine beyond just making sure we get the all the different populations is that homebound elderly who may have no one to be looking out for them. And I don't even know if they're registered anywhere that anybody would know to find them. And I'm just worried about people like that with maybe even not real proficient at getting on the telephone and the computer or finding the number, you know. And we've talked about this before, but it's something we all need to be cognizant of. And, you know, our neighbors and things like that, that that the whole community needs to be looking out for people that might fall through the cracks.
Right. So we are working with Doug McGary and the Area Agency on Aging to identify those populations. One of the challenges in reaching homebound individuals is with the two current vaccines, the transport and transfer criteria are very restrictive. And so it's not possible to go into each individual home to administer a vaccine, because you have a vial that has for Moderna 10 doses or Pfizer, five doses per se. And it's just there are transfer criteria that we have to adhere to. So we're working to figure out how we do that. Obviously, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine in a single dose would be highly effective for that homebound population. And so we'll we'll see how this goes. Also, we do know that starting next week, the Ohio Department of Aging, in conjunction with the Ohio National Guard, will be doing vaccinations starting in the major urban cities throughout Ohio to provide vaccines to low-income senior housing facilities. And so we're going to actually have a meeting scheduled later this afternoon with that point of contact to understand which facilities within Montgomery County are going to be eligible for that and how that's going to move forward. Public Health's role in that will be to actually receive the allocation of vaccine from the state of Ohio and then transfer it to those facilities for the Ohio National Guard members to administer the vaccine.
Great.
One last question. I have one. It's not so much a question. It's just I'd like for you to make a clarification for people that the vaccines that CVS and Walgreens are getting directly are not going through your process.
Correct. Commissioner Lieberman, yes. We each vaccine, each enrolled vaccine provider in the state of Ohio receives their own shipment of vaccine. So our hospital systems receive their own shipment. Our federally qualified health centers receive theirs. The retail pharmacies, including CVS and Walgreens and Kroger and Rite Aid, receive theirs. And then this health department receives its own separate shipment. Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah. Updating us all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Okay, we have another update from the Greater Dayton RTA. I see Mark is here. And Mark, you're leaving us. What are you hiring? What's your date?
My last day here will be the 31st of March.
Okay, all right. But I see you brought some great people that you work with. Nicole is here. I see Rob and Brandon. And so go right ahead.
Well, thank you so much, all the commissioners and for the whole leadership team of the county who's joining us today. We'd like to do a tag team presentation for you, talk about where we've been at in the past year, some of the big issues going on, and some of the things that we're doing that are more futuristic, but some are actually happening now. So you mentioned some of the folks joining us with us today is Bob Rosinski. Bob is for at least the next seven weeks or six weeks, the deputy CEO. And then at that point in time, the board has determined that they want to remove the deputy word from his title. And I'm super excited to know that a Daytonian is going to succeed me in keeping the RTA running. Also with us is Brandon Politickio. You know, Brandon, he's our chief customer and business development officer, the guy with the longest title at the RTA, and Nikki Miller, of course, who keeps us connected in the public sector and with all forms of government. So a little bit of overview, the screen you're looking at here, obviously, a lot of talk about COVID and our efforts, we want to highlight a little bit. Thanks to the CARES Act funding that we received, we've been able to maintain full service levels throughout our system since day one of the pandemic. And this has included some extra services that we didn't publicize, but we made available several vehicles with volunteer-only drivers to transport COVID-positive individuals to necessary appointments. It's also helped us maintain full employment, which is good, obviously, for the economy here locally with our employees, even though some had to volunteer to shift jobs into cleaning and disinfecting instead of their normal jobs that may have been driving in our connect service door to door. We've also made it clear to Jeff Cooper and others that we stand ready in any way, shape, or form, we can contribute to this vaccination effort, whether that's helping deliver vaccines to people who are homebound or getting the people out of their homes to a site. We're ready and prepared to help with that effort. We like to do it. The next slide you're going to see is a is a data comparison of your regional transit authority to the rest of the nation. That's us in blue. I guess that should have been green, Brandon. We're greens more our color, but but you can see, like most systems, our ridership is down. For the year, it landed at about 36%, but look at that national average. The national average is twice the loss that we're seeing here in Dayton. So the obvious question is why? And here's my answer to that question. It's a combination of two things. One, it really demonstrates that the people who ride our buses traditionally every day and every evening and every Saturday and Sunday are essential workers, especially in the healthcare industries and retail grocery, those sorts of workers who need us desperately to connect them to their jobs. And really, the community needs those folks. And the fact that we were able to maintain full service really addressed the concerns we had about social distancing and other things. So I think combined, it's given us some recognition at the state and federal level that at least what we believe what we've done to date has really supported our community in terms of what was best for it and keeping these folks in essential jobs connected to their employment sites. So now I'm going to ask Bob to talk a little bit about our capital investments we've been making in the past few years, how that's impacted the community.
Good afternoon. We embarked on an ambitious goal back in 2015 to replace 100% of our revenue vehicle fleet. And I'm proud to say we met that goal. Most people didn't think we would, but we have today. Since then, we have replaced our 75 small bus fleet with all new buses. We've replaced over 100 large green buses in our diesel fleet, which is our daily pullout. And the most exciting news is we have 45 new electric dual-mode buses in shiny silver and green that have replaced all the old 22-year-old trolley buses. So currently, we are now running the youngest fleet in the state of Ohio and probably one of the youngest in the nation. On a daily basis, the oldest bus we have out there is 2016 in regular service. And the average life expectancy of a bus is 12 to 15 years. So that really says a lot. So we're really proud of that, and it helps make the county look clean and fresh. Back in 2015, you can do the next slide, Brandon. We also embarked on a plan to protect our $26 million investment here in downtown Dayton with renovations to our headquarters, as well as our Longworth campus. And we've added probably $10 million worth of work since then to these facilities. And we've really doubled down our efforts during COVID to take advantage of other groups that we're cutting back on using outside contractors and construction crews and whatnot. And we've accelerated some projects to keep those people working so we can keep all the economy flowing as as much as we can have an impact. The slideshow, a couple snazzy pictures of some new lighting and awnings we're going to add to our downtown headquarters to give our historic building a little pizzazz. So we're excited about that. And then finally, we are embarking on a probably 75 to $100 million project to rebuild our electric infrastructure grid that our trolley bus system runs on. And that is now underway. And it's probably about a 10-year project, but that's going to be our main focus going forward for the next five to 10 years. And we're super excited about that, and we really are excited about the Third Street Bridge reopening, perhaps a little bit early. We love to partner with you guys on projects, and you've been great to work with. And that's another project, and we'll be happy when our buses can cross that bridge once again.
No pressure, Paul. Now we're going to ask Brandon to talk a little bit about more service-related investments we've made.
Thank you. As as Mark mentioned earlier, we had a partnership earlier during the pandemic with Public Health and the Dayton Fire Department, who actually came and trained our drivers when we were providing transportation for individuals to testing sites during yearly periods of this pandemic. And in addition to maintaining 100% of our services, we've been able to do other partnerships this year. One is we had with Homeful with their mobile grocery unit. We had a shuttle service that we continue to operate when needed through the downtown area to get people to that mobile grocery shuttle. We recently partnered with the Area Agency on Aging, and then through a certification through the Ohio Department of Aging are now an eligible provider for transportation with the Area Agency on Aging, which has helped to fill in critical gaps of transportation within their customer base. We also partnered with Montgomery County, as well with you all on a recent partnership with providing bus passes through our new mobile payment system, which I'll talk about in a minute, which has been very successful, as well as a partnership with Montgomery County Better and Services Commission to provide transportation to their customers to get to critical medical appointments as well. Some other service changes, we've seen expansion in our paratransit service, which primarily serves customers who are unable to use our bus routes due to a disability. Previous to this expansion, we operated service within the federal required three-quarters of a mile around all of our bus routes. However, we expanded this service in 2017 to go countywide, which now allows everyone within the county who may have a disability who's unable to use our bus routes, the ability to use that service. And it's been extremely successful, and we've seen many people in these areas able to use the service. In addition, we also expanded our paratransit service in 2018 to allow same-day reservations. Prior to that, our customers had to book up to seven days in advance or the day before. But now with same-day reservations, this allows those customers to make last-minute changes to their trips, perhaps a last-minute trip to the grocery store or pharmacy, or something we talk about a lot as a customer may need more time after, let's say, a Dallas appointment to rest. This allows them to schedule a later time so that they can get have a safe and healthy trip home. Another service that we launched in 2017 and over the past several years has expanded is our Connect On Demand program. Our Connect On Demand program expanded service in previously unserved and underserved areas throughout the county. What this program does is where we had very low bus service, meaning buses would come once in the morning, once in the evening, Monday through Friday, maybe no service on the weekend, On Demand replaced that service, providing a 24/7 door-to-door service within these zones that you see in green. Currently, the service is free, and over 70% of the over 500 daily customers that use this service are actually connecting to our bus route. So it successfully made that first and last connection for these customers. But what this was able to do is really give service in these areas where we had not a lot of service, but also to provide it at a much lower cost. Finally, as a mobility leader for the region, we definitely see ourselves as being the ones who can help to deliver universal access to public shared mobilities, which is why our goal is to deliver a one-stop shop to all the counties, all the residents of Montgomery County, either through one app or one call to our call center. So the goal is within this mobility as a service platform, customers will be able to plan, book, and pay for various mobility modes while connecting to their final destination. So whether it's a bus So whether it's a bus, scooter, or bike, we're working together to ensure all those modes can be connected to whoever wants to use them within the area. In order to support that future mobility-as-a-service platform, we had to upgrade our fare payment system. So this year, or this past year, we introduced Tap Pay, which is our new safe contactless payment system. Currently, the system's available to customers through their mobile devices, available via the Transit app, and later this year, we'll introduce smart cards. To date, close to 7,000 customers have signed up and represent close to 35% of our daily boardings. One of the best features that we have now with this new system is we can offer fare capping. Fare capping ensures that no customer pays more than the daily or monthly rate for our services. Currently, it is often those who are least able to afford the upfront costs of a monthly pass that end up paying more at the end of the month through continual purchasing of daily passes, and in turn, they end up actually traveling less. Fare capping solves this by providing equity to these customers by ensuring that they pay no more than the daily value or the monthly value of a pass. Finally, this system's going to allow us to remove all cash payments onboard our vehicles and create greater access for all of our customers throughout an expansive retail network of over 150 locations that will be located close to our bus routes throughout the county. At these retail locations, such as Walgreens and Speedway and our transit centers, customers can convert their cash into value into their Tap Pay mobile or smart card account. Finally, Tap Pay allowed us to partner, as I mentioned earlier, with everyone here to offer county residents who are unemployed a monthly pass. And to date, this program has successfully given many individuals that ability to travel even while unemployed to look for that next job. Finally, what you may have seen in a recent Dayton Daily News article regarding our transit system redesign, which we call "What Connects You", we understand that as the county changes, so must our services to continue connecting people to essential jobs and critical healthcare appointments. That's why, beginning in 2018, we embarked on this transit system redesign study with the goal of developing a next-generational system that will increase the quality of our services through more frequent, direct, and easy-to-use mobility services. We talked to many jurisdictions and organizations, including those within Montgomery County. We also held various community and neighborhood groups' meetings to get feedback. Most importantly, we listened to over 2,000 customers on what they wanted to see in their future transit system. Based on this feedback, it is clear that they wanted more frequent service with 30-minute or less wait times, allowing for faster travel, more direct trips, including additional night and weekend service. With this information, we created service plans, as shown in the map to your right, to meet the current and future mobility needs of the region, along with a recommended roadmap of how to improve the quality of our services. Today, we remain on hold during the pandemic in order to identify what changes may be needed as a result and how the system redesign plans will be implemented and funded in the future. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Mark.
Thank you, Brandon. So from the county's perspective, I could see some eyes light up on some of the things we've done going back to 2017. And again, those couldn't have happened without your support and certainly the support of our Board of Trustees that has been fantastic. Some of these ideas were experiments. We had big concerns about expanding our boundaries on our door-to-door service out to the county line of, you know, could we handle the demand that we would find? And fortunately, our planning was good on that, and we've been able to accommodate it. So I think what you're looking at for the future of RTA, at least in our eyes, is it's a network of different services that are really tailored to meet the needs of the citizens, no matter where they live in Montgomery County. So in the high-density corridors, you would have high-frequency service, as much as we call it flyer-like service in some of the corridors, which we'd love to see happen. The On Demand program, which was an action that was developed internally to say, how do we address these areas that are truly underserved in the community? And I think, you know, it started out with one zone. We've got five or six now. My gut says someday you'll see On Demand services to the county boundaries as well, which I think is great. So then anyone, not just those with a disability that qualifies under ADA, any citizen who needs a ride will be able to get it. You remember, I'll remember Bob Steinbach. He and I used to debate all the time what we called these dead zones, where there were areas where people couldn't get a ride from anybody. And we always thought there had to be a way to fix this. I think we're well on our way to making that happen. And then finally, with the fare capping option in our new fare system, it finally brings equity to the folks that are least able to afford transit. So finally, they will pay no more than anyone else. They'll pay no more than the value of that monthly pass that somebody was able to take advantage of and save $30, $40 a month, which if they're low-income, they obviously desperately need. So with that, I want to definitely thank the commissioners, in my case, for the many, many years of support for our efforts here at RTA and everyone in leadership at the county. Michael helped us early on in the pandemic get PPE that we desperately needed for our frontline workers out there on the buses. And we've had help from Paul and others, and Tom. Everybody's been great for us, and we stand ready to do whatever's necessary next, especially that which is related to the vaccination process. And with that, I hope we're within our time limit, and I would be happy to answer questions if we can.
Did anybody want to ask Mark or any of the presenters a quick question?
No, I just want to say thank you for getting through the, well, we're not through it, but right away, being ready for the pandemic and, you know, looking at the expanded service that you've been able to do is really just incredible. And so, Mark, thank you. Thank you for your years of service. We're going to miss you. But we see that you're leaving everything in good hands, so we're happy to see that. But yeah, we'll definitely miss you.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Lieberman. A big shout out to our bus drivers and maintenance employees. They're the folks, you know, they're out there doing that job every day. I've been lobbying governor's office to get our folks in line. We were by the CDC supposed to be in Phase 1B. We're not there yet in terms of how the governor's office feels, but, you know, they're out there in that eight-and-a-half-by-40-foot box seeing hundreds of different people every single day. So we're going to keep that fight up, and we know you guys support us on that. And thank you for your kind words about me. It's been an absolute pleasure working in a community, because I've worked in six where, you know, people come together and get things done. I've worked in communities not too far from here in greater Cincinnati, where it seems like everything was a fight. Here, people seem to come together and do things, and it's been fun to be a part of that process.
And I would just echo Debbie's comments. And I know every time I've worked with anyone from RTA, it's so responsive, so flexible, and creative thinking to help, like you said, get the job done. So thank you, and a huge thanks to all your frontline workers that have been showing up every day, every hour, helping the whole community. We say it every week, but we can't say it enough, that we hope that everyone on RTA's team from the top all the way to the street that knows how much we appreciate all they do for all of our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, in the early days of the pandemic, when the Emergency Operations Center was activated, Mark and his team were very good about figuring out ways that we could get transportation for people with disabilities to test sites, to hospitals, the VA Center, and all around town. And they were very good about doing that. And also, I've observed there are project mobility people bringing people to We Care Arts, and they're so helpful and courteous to the people and just do everything they can to make the trip a reasonably happy trip. So thanks, everybody.
Mark, I'd just like to say congratulations to you, your whole team. I think you left RTA in great hands. It has been a pleasure to work with you over the years, both in my role as county administrator and assistant county administrator. It's just been an absolute pleasure doing the tornado, working together through the emergency management system, and now through the pandemic, your team, the bus drivers, everybody there has been great. So you'll be missed. I'm sure you'll be tapped to do something in your days of retirement. But your leadership at RTA has been phenomenal, and you will be missed. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Mark, this is Tom Kelly. You know, on behalf of the whole human services system and all the work you've done over the years, you know, whether it's been, well, it's been our county agencies, the nonprofits, you know, all those agencies that you've really helped provide that critical transportation, I'd really like to thank you on behalf of that entire group. I'd also like to give you a special thanks on behalf of Job and Family Services for all the years of work you've done in trying to help our clients get to where they need to be. You know, we've all faced these challenges. We've all tried to figure out ways to move them around the community. And RTA has always been a partner right there by our side in finding ways to move those clients around and be of special assistance. So I really like to thank you, Mark, for the many years of service you've provided, all the ideas, the dedication, the work and efforts that you put into the community. And I want to thank your team, while we have your team on the call as well. I know, just as you've said, it's always been a team effort, but you've been there to lead the team, and we really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You know it's our mission, but it's always good to hear some positive feedback that we're getting some things done.
Yep.
I'd like to add one more thing. As Mark leaves, we've also just learned recently that Nicole is leaving. And I just want to say, Nikki, we've really appreciated you for the work you've done at RTA and the census, and we're really looking forward to working with you in your new role as well. So thanks for your years of dedication to RTA and really being there for all the local governments and as outreach, and you've been really helpful. So thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And I'm looking forward to continuing to partner with you in my new role. So it's not the last you've heard of me.
Oh, no.
Well, that's great. Congratulations again, Mark. Congratulations to you, Bob. We're going to be looking forward to working with you. And Nicole, you have always been such a great representative of RTA in the community, and congratulations on your new job. So, you know, Mark, you can't go away without getting a proclamation. Now, we have said so many wonderful things about you, so I'm just going to make this short and not give the whole thing, because we'd be here for another hour. But we'll get this over to you. But it's a proclamation, whereas it is with great pleasure that we proudly honor Mr. Mark Donaghy on the occasion of his retirement as the CEO of the Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority in April. And whereas that Mark Donaghy has been a strong advocate for closing the mobility gaps, he's helped develop and launch the popular and free flyer shuttle bus, which I think we've all been on, connecting the University of Dayton campus to downtown and the Link Dayton Bike Share Program. And whereas Mr. Donaghy is a true public servant and has been incredibly, he's been an incredible valuable partner of Montgomery County team and the community. And whereas after 15 years champion the expansion of services for our residents, especially in our most underserved communities, we want to thank Mr. Mark Donaghy for positioning the Greater Dayton RTA to serve the region for many generations to come. So congratulations on your retirement, and it's signed by myself, Debbie Lieberman and Carolyn Rice. And we're going to miss you, Mark. And, you know, you always stood right there with me when we had, you helped us so much on food access situations that we had. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm certainly humbled by the proclamation and I would say privileged. I've been in the business 45 years, and I'm glad I finished here. It's been a great privilege and honor for me. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the county engineer.
Good afternoon, commissioners, administrators, and guests. We have three resolutions today. The first is Resolution 21127 to authorize a payment by warrant in the amount of $250,880 to the City of Clayton from permissive tax funds for the 2019 State Route 49 resurfacing and curb ramp replacement project. 128 is to prove the 2020 County Highway System Mileage Certification Report as prepared by the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation. And 129 is to prove the purchase agreements and authorize appropriations for the acquisition of standard highway easements and temporary construction easements necessary for the Peters Pike and Lower Miami's Burke Road and Colbert's Replacement Project in Butler and Miami Townships and to execute and record the same.
I move for approval. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile court.
Thank you, commissioners. Under juvenile court, we have Resolution 130, authorizing a payment by warrant to Paytel Communications in the amount of $1,090.55. We have Resolution 131, authorizing an agreement with the City of Dayton to provide mediation services for youth referred by juvenile court in an amount not to exceed $45,000 through December 31, 2021.
I move for approval.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Under Monday Community Correctional Institution, we have Resolution 132, authorizing an agreement with Montgomery County Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board to provide reimbursement for psychotropic medicines, EMDR services, and peer recovery services in an amount not to exceed $158,000 through December 31, 2021.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
County coroner.
Under the county coroner, we have Resolution 133, accept an amendment for a grant from the National Network of Public Health Institutes for funding of the partnering to improve natural disaster-related mortality surveillance program by extending the date through March 31, 2021 and modifying the statement of work.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Administrator.
Under the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on February 2, 2021. Resolution 134, approval of bills. That list is available in the clerk's office. Accept the oath of office. 135, Judy Dodge, Commissioner. 136, Deborah A. Lieberman, Commissioner. 137, Paul Gruner, Engineer. 138, Rob Streck, Sheriff. 139, Brandon C. McLean, Recorder. 140, Thias H. Heck, Junior Prosecutor. 141, Mike Foley, Clerk of Courts. 142, Kent Hartsburger, MD JD, Coroner.
I move for approval. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services, Tyler. Is Tyler here?
Brittany. Brittany, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Brittany, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead. She's, I don't hear her.
Can't hear you, Brittany.
Unmute.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. Sorry about that. Under Administrative Services, we have Resolution 143, Approval of Personnel Actions. That list is available in the clerk's office. Resolution 144, Authorize a Payment by Warrant to Washington Township in the amount of $4,053. 145, Authorize a Consulting Agreement with the Logan County Sheriff's Office for Access to the Justice Web Reports Module with a Revenue Not to Exceed $500 through December 31, 2021. 146, Extend the Price Agreement with Frazier Hybe, Inc. for Public Relations and Marketing Communication Services for the Business Service Department through December 31, 2021. 147, Authorize the Purchase from OnSol LLC of Code Red Subscription Services for the Office of Emergency Management in an Amount Not to Exceed $45,000 through January 31, 2022. 148, Reject the Bids for the Service Agreement for Stationary Compactor Services for the Environmental Services Department. The next two resolutions amend agreements. Resolution 149, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, FKA Ameritech Mobile Communications Incorporated for Use of Elevated Space on the David Road Water Tank by Amending Various Articles Within the Agreement. 150, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the Use of Rooftop State Space at the Administration Building by Amending the Term of the Agreement.
I move for approval. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I have Resolution 151, authorizing an agreement for consulting services with Rapelis Financial Consultants, Inc. for On-Call Water and Wastewater Consultant Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $30,000 through December 31, 2021. 152, Accept the 20% Performance Bond for the Terra Retail Development in an Amount of $8,005. Resolution 153- Resolution 153 release 100% of the cash surety and the subdividers contract from Divided Ridge Associates, LTD, for Washington Trace Section 12. Following two or two amend agreements. 154 with municipal and contractor ceiling products for construction of the Brookville Lake Estates Sanitary Sewer Improvements Phase II project by adding $34,757 to the original amount for revised total of $74,469. 155 Prime AE Group, Inc. for preparation of detailed construction plans and specifications for the Sheldon 12-inch water main replacement project by adding $19,170 to the original amount for revised total of $72,422 due to a change in the scope of work. The following two resolutions are to approve the planned specifications, estimated cost, and solicit bids for the construction of water facilities. Resolution 156 with the Centerville North Tank Rehab Project in the amount of $2,2,500. And 157 Cynthia Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $491,364.50.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, if I could ask, Matt, could you describe Resolution 156, Centerville North Tank? Because that's going to be a big project for us, and Commissioner of the public is going to really see that going down the highway, how nice that's going to look when we finish it.
Yes, yes, Michael. This tank is, we have two tanks that sits right next to one of the Centerville Middle Schools. Last year, we rehabbed the South Tank. If you were to drive by, it's pristine white. But basically, these tanks were put in in the early 90s, and we're going in and recoding them in the inside and the outside. So, we did the South one last year, and this will take care of the North Tank.
Thank you, Matt. Sorry, Commissioners.
That's okay. I believe next up is OMB.
Yes, thank you very much. We have three resolutions for your consideration. We have 158 authorize appropriation amendments, 159 authorize additional appropriations, and 160 authorize cash transfers.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Human Services, Tom.
Thank you. I have one item this afternoon. Resolution 161. It will terminate the agreement with the Miami Valley Organizing Collaborative for the West State and Food Access Collective Impact Program effective February 15, 2021.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Services, Chris.
Good afternoon. Under Business Services, Resolution 0162 authorizes various payments by warrant for the Business Services Department. Under Community Economic Development, we have 0163 approving economic development government equity agreement with the City of Dayton for the Epix 2 project in an amount not to exceed $250,000 or 5.6% of the total project cost, whichever is less. And 0164 authorizing an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the various member jurisdictions to renew and administer the business first for a Greater Dayton Region Business Retention and Expansion Program through December 31, 2025.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Comments by County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. First, I'd like to really give kudos out to our county engineer. I continue to look out this window and see how this bridge is progressing. And Paul, you and your team, working with the contractor, have done a fantastic job of moving this project forward, especially during the winter. So, great job. It's good to see the bridge coming together, and I think everybody's excited about when it will be finished. Also, Commissioners, we, you know, we don't talk much about our county coroner, and I think a lot of people probably think it's kind of maybe more of a morbid subject. But our coroner provides a great service to the community because under Ohio law, the coroner is required to do investigations on deaths, criminal violence, accident, suicide, or individuals that have suddenly passed away or indication of a suspicious or an unusual manner. Now, you also have cases where the identity of the deceased or the next of kin is unknown. And this takes a great deal of work, and our coroner staff, they do an excellent job. So, last week, Commissioner Dodge and myself, we had an opportunity to meet with the coroner who has had several new machines, but one of them is called a Lowdok's machine. And this is a machine that we put in the budget last year. It's a 3D x-ray machine. It does full body scans in about 13 seconds. And the coroner was able to make the modifications necessary to his facility to get this machine in. It took quite a bit of construction, and we had to build some reinforcements and some housings to hold the machine. All in all, the Lowdok's, the cost of the construction, the machine, and we had an additional CT scanner that we purchased with CareZak dollars. All in all, this is nearly $900,000 worth of investment to our coroner's office. So, our hats are off to him. And Commissioner Dodge, you want to weigh in on the tour that we had an opportunity to go to?
Yeah. Yeah, it was very interesting, and you know, it's, the one thing that I thought was impressive is the fact that, you know, they can do a full-body x-ray of individuals who have passed away, and perhaps from that x-ray, they can find out the cause of death, and they don't have to do then a complete autopsy, which, let's face it, is not exactly the most, you know, wonderful way that you want to think about your loved one who's passed away. So, you know, that was a big help. And I think on behalf of the other Commissioners, we were more than happy to invest in this amount because it really is needed. And, you know, I didn't realize, but the coroner, you know, basically serves approximately 40 other counties in this region. So, it has been really needed for quite some time, so I'm glad to be able to help on that. And on another, on another note, a little happier note, and that is that Gem City Market, it's getting ready to open here in a couple of months, and they're looking for people to work there. So, if you want to find out a little bit about what they do and what they need, go to gemcitymarket, all one word, gemcitymarket.com. They are also conducting a survey to find out more about what brands people want to buy. They'll ask you questions about what kind of diet that you follow, if any, and just all sorts of questions about the kind of food that you'd like. So, I just think it's a wonderful opportunity, and it's going to be such, such a big boost to that Lower Salem Avenue. So, we're excited about them coming. So, it's not going to be long, not going to be long.
Well, and we'll finally have a grocery store close to our building as well. So, oftentimes, you know, whether we're doing something here, it's like, boy, it sure would be nice if we had a grocery store minutes away. Well, one of the things that we haven't talked about in a while is our Safe Sleep Ambassador Program. The number one cause of death for babies up to a year old is sudden unexpected infant death, or as we often refer to it as SIDS. And many of those deaths are a result of babies being put to sleep in unsafe environments. And the Safe Sleep Ambassador Program has had really interesting and great success as we teach members of our community on safe sleep. A lot of this is about awareness and awareness of what, what is safe sleeping. You know, sometimes mothers have been taught from their mothers or grandmothers, a way to put a baby down, and that's, as we've learned through the years, that sometimes we're not, we're not doing the best practices. And so, members are taught safe sleep, basically, and what's appropriate for infant sleep. And there is evidence-based programs that we share with all the members of our community to learn about safe sleep. And so, enough, some upcoming class is going to be on February 20th, virtually, of course, and you need to register for that by February 17. The class will be held at 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and if you'd like to attend, you can call Angela Grayson at Public Health Dayton in Montgomery County, and her number is 937-496-6831. Again, 937-496-6831. And I'm sure you can go on Public Health's website to register as well. And again, it's about awareness, and we like to use something very simple about the awareness. It's ABC alone on their back and in a crib, and that is the safest way. And, and you know, I know for years, so many of us were taught different. I was, my, I didn't have my kids sleep on their back. They slept on their bellies and had all kinds of bumpers and cute little things in their crib, and we know that that's just not safe. That, so when, when we've seen numbers really improve for infant mortality in our county, and we just want to continue that and make sure that awareness is there. And here's, here's a way that you can help by being an ambassador. So, that's it for me, thanks.
Well, and I'm just going to chime in. Last week, I just made an off-the-cuff remark during my remarks about that I had toured the arcade because the Land Bank had sponsored one of those plastic turkeys. And I was shocked. The Dayton Daily News followed up, and I don't know if you remember, but it ended up on the front page of the newspaper one day this week, and they even used one of my pictures because the community is very excited. I have learned that the community is so excited for the arcade to open up. And, you know, as I explained, and they explained in the article, and I think I mentioned it last week, this is pretty exciting. The one center that opened, and when I drove by this week, I watched, and it looks like there is movement in there. So, good sign that they are the Dayton Innovation Hub. It's a joint venture between UD and the Entrepreneur Center, and they're going to be what they call an anchor tenant, meaning they're, they're going to be one of the big, they've leased out, I don't want to be quoted, but a great amount of space. And, and shout out to the RTA that was just on, and I think one of you mentioned it, is the Flyer Bus that they have going between UD and downtown. And they're going to be bringing students down to the arcade. There's classrooms, there's these really cool chairs that they call the phone booth, and it is just very exciting. So, I'm just, I just have to tell you, I couldn't believe that that would end up on the front page of the Dayton Daily News, but it just shows you that everyone is excited. So, we will certainly mention it when it is more open to the public. But hats off to the whole, everyone involved in this. We played a role. You know, lots of partners here in the community helped make this happen. And it is about, just like the Gem City Market, it's about to be to the place where we can go and visit it. And then, they will, they're working on the South Arcade. There's going to be apartments for artists and creative types. But then, they'll be, in the next two years, the whole Northern Arcade. So, it won't be done yet. So, that just tickled me that a remark like that would end up being a front-page story, so.
Chris is always listening, Carolyn. Remember, Chris is always listening.
Okay, Chris, way to go.
I just wanted to add to that, you know, thank goodness that UD decided to help us, help us, help the community with this. Judy and I had an opportunity to also go there a while back, and the UD portion is incredible. You know, remember, we were there for the, whatever we called it, not ribbon cutting, but when we started the process, when we were all there, and it's amazing what they've gotten done. But the UD offices and the Innovation Hub is just beautiful. And one of the things that they did, they took the old doors off the chapel. I don't know if you got to see this, Carolyn, but the doors that were on the chapel on UD campus, that mean a lot to many of us that went to school at UD, and they took those doors and they made them into a conference table. And they did it by, you know, they shined them up and maybe stained them, and then they put a piece of glass over those doors, and that is just, it's spectacular, the whole thing. So, we are, we're all looking forward to it being open.
Yep, absolutely. Yep. Okay, well, real quick, of course, you know, I have to show this again. Come on, everybody, wear your mask. It's not over yet. No question about it. We just had an update from Jeff Cooper. We've still got a little ways to go, although it's just, it's getting a little bit better.
You know, I just want to add, Commissioner, as you're talking about that, when we were talking to Jeff, I should have mentioned this. Our offices have been getting a lot of calls and frustration from people. And I think we just need to be patient. And as Commissioner was saying, they're not the only ones that are scheduling appointments. And yes, there are all different kinds of options, but I think one of the things that's really important to remember is if you make an appointment at one place, and maybe you get an appointment at CVS or Walgreens, make sure you cancel one or the other because we're hearing a lot of that is happening, that people just don't show up, and maybe they're going to another site. So, you know, when these vaccines are as precious as they are right now, let's, let's make sure that everybody's doing their part. Stay calm, you will get a vaccine. It's just, you know, when people are, the other morning when the phones opened, I think that was on Friday, wasn't it, Carolyn? There was so much frustration. I was getting texts, I was getting phone calls. We're not in charge. I wish the Commissioner was still on. You know, his departments are, and we'll get through this, but we just need to be patient and keep people informed.
Yeah, yeah.
From personal experience, a couple of the sites are not very friendly in terms of confirming your registration.
No, they're not. You're right, right.
That was a little, so we ended up at a third site.
Wow. Well, I'm glad you caught it.
I think you brought up a good point for the public to know again. It's not the county commissioners. We are not over the vaccine areas. That is public health. It's Ohio Department of Public Health, and it is the state. So, it's very important that we make sure people get to the right locations.
And remember, go to Public Health's website, go to the State Department of Health. You know, there's new stuff coming out almost every day. And, and as Commissioner was saying, you know, as Johnson &amp; Johnson comes here, hopefully next month, maybe end of March, it's going to open up a whole new world. So, you know, the governor and the federal government are doing stuff on the fly, and we're learning, and everybody across the country. And so, we'll get everybody vaccinated. But again, the equity piece is so important that we make sure that people understand it is safe, safer than getting the virus, honestly. So, we're, we're really hopeful that we can get our whole community vaccinated and safe.
Okay, good. Before I close out, I have to say that we lost a dear friend this week. Ron Casey, former Harrison Township trustee since about 2007, sheriff's deputy and fire chief in Harrison Township. Just a lovely, lovely gentleman, and it was very sudden and sad. And, and so, our hearts go out to his family, his friends and family. So, with that, our next meeting is February 16, 1:30.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.